Welcome to your city commission meeting. Please turn off or silence all cell phones during the meeting. Meetings are televised every day on channel two at 7:00 PM and midnight and available for viewing on YouTube and Facebook Live. Leavenworth City Commission meeting will be open to the public with limited seating capacity. To reserve a seat, email C. Williamson at firstcity.org no later than 4:00 PM on August 11th. Seats will be available on a first come, first served basis. To mitigate the spread of COVID-19, face coverings and social distancing are required to attend the meeting. In accordance with Kansas Open Meetings Act, the meeting can be viewed on channel two and via Facebook Live. The public is encouraged to continue to view the meeting via Facebook Live or channel two and to submit public comments to be read during public comments portion of the meeting and questions on agenda items to be read during discussion on that topic. Submit your comments or questions to C. Williamson at firstcity.org no later than 6:00 PM on August 11th, which of course is today. For call-in options related to commenting on agenda items, submit your inquiry to again C. Williamson at firstcity.org. First former business is to stand and I'll lead everybody in the Pledge of Allegiance followed by silent meditation. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Well, this is the best part of this evening. I get the mayor of the city of Leavenworth on behalf of my fellow commissioners. Master Sergeant Royer, would you please stand up here? I've got some recognition to bestow upon Master Sergeant Royer for his heroism on May 27, 2020, two and a half months ago. And I've got two parts of this. One is a mayor's award for community service, which I'll deal with first, and then we have something on behalf of all the citizens in the city of Leavenworth to recognize and memorialize your courageous and decisive actions on May 27th. But that'll be the second part of this ceremony. So first, I'd like to welcome members of his family, his fiancee, Ms. Haley Syla is here. Thank you for coming. You can certainly come up and the boys can come up too. Donovan Royer and David Royer. Welcome, young men. Good to see you. And anybody else? I think that's it as far as people to accompany you today. So the first thing is, a couple of years ago, we established the mayor's award for community service. These aren't given out very often, but certainly you're a deserving recipient and I'm just going to read this and present it to you and then we'll get on to the other presentation from all the citizens of Leavenworth. City of Leavenworth, David Royer is presented the mayor's award for community service for his remarkable and courageous actions on May 27, 2020 on Centennial Bridge in the city of Leavenworth. David's quick and decisive actions ended a deadly threat, saved countless lives and prevented a larger tragedy from occurring. The city of Leavenworth's history would have forever been altered if not for David's heroic actions. Wherever life takes him, David Royer will always be a part of the story of Leavenworth, Kansas, the first city of Kansas. And today's date, August 11, 2020, and I've signed it as the mayor of City of Leavenworth. So thank you very much for everything that you've done, for your patriotism, for your bravery and for everything you did on that particular day. We're very, very proud of you.
Thank you, sir.
I also have a coin, a city coin, in this nice presentation box along with a lapel pen. It's a great coin, First City of Leavenworth, founded in 1854, and I want to present this to you also. Thank you very much. So the next part of our presentation is to recognize Master Sergeant Moore as part of a wonderful token of the community's esteem and appreciation for Master Sergeant Royer's cool thinking and bravery on that fateful day of May 27, 2020. And we have a presentation from the citizens and I'd like to say that one of our longtime local businesses helped us acquire this memorabilia, this very nice sword, saber and plaque to present to you to recognize your heroic actions on the 27th of May. And it's a beautiful plaque that it's mounted on in terms of the saber. It's quilted red oak. It's from a company called WKC, which has been, I think, in existence since the middle of the 16th century in Germany. They're located in Solingen, Germany. They're known for their craftsmanship and I think you'll see that once we get over there. So I'd like you to come over here and maybe if you could stand here, we'll just tip it up a little bit. And so on the saber, we have engraved, "Master Sergeant David Royer, 05/27/20, Leavenworth, Kansas," and then the plaque says, "For your heroism on Centennial Bridge that saved lives and earned you the city's eternal gratitude." And so I'm going to pick this up. Maybe you can get up. So this is presented on behalf of the citizens of our great city. I think it's beautiful. You certainly deserve it and I just really happy that you could come here with your family and do this.
Mr. Mayor, is this the gentleman back there at the photo? Are you with Master Sergeant Royer? Come on up and get a good picture. I mean, you're trying to take one from an angle. Get it up here.
This is what Chris Presser thinks. We're grateful. I hope it's his good personal family too. It's good seeing you boys and having this fiancee come and share this moment and we are very grateful for you being there and taking the decisive action that saved countless lives and prevented a real tragedy from happening. So thank you very much, Master Sergeant Royer. And you certainly can say a few things if you'd like or you could... When you go, we do have the box back there, I think, Taylor?
Yeah.
If we need. But thank you very much for yours.
I just want to thank everybody, City of Leavenworth, Chief Kitchens, all the kind words that he said and all the support that he's given me throughout this whole thing. It's been a surreal ordeal, but the support that I've gotten from many local businesses, even prior to this, they've reached out to me, a lot of local businesses, and Leavenworth has reached out and done very nice things for my family. I really appreciate everybody's gratitude and everybody's support. Thank you so much.
Thank you, C.
You don't have to be held captive here. Our assistant city manager will help you get it into the box if that you're going to. But thank you, family, for coming and have a good rest of your summer.
Thank you.
Good way to start off a meeting in the middle of the summer. So the whole business consideration of previous meeting minutes. So are there any comments or questions from fellow commissioners on our meeting minutes from July 28?
No.
If not, we'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we accept minutes from the July 28, 2020 regular meeting as presented.
I second it. There's a motion to the second to approve the previous meeting minutes. We're going to start voting with Commissioner Preisinger.
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson.
Aye.
Commissioner Bowder.
Aye.
An aye as the mayor votes aye. The ayes have it, four to zero. The motion carries, so we've approved the minutes from our July 28, 2020 regular meeting. We have several second consideration ordinances coming up here, which will require a roll call vote, but the first one is second consideration ordinance, 8135, establishing a redevelopment district.
Mr. Mayor and Commissioner, this item deals with the redevelopment of the Price Chopper project. We've had a number of actions at this point. We've done industrial revenue bonds. We did a resolution to set the public hearing. We had the public hearing for the establishment of a redevelopment district, otherwise known as a TIF district. This is on second consideration tonight. There have been no changes since the first consideration ordinance was read. We do have Pete Heaven from the development team joining us via go-to meeting. If you have any questions or if you have any questions of staff, otherwise, there have been no changes since the first consideration reading.
And the name of the gentleman who's with us is?
Pete Heaven.
Mr. Heaven, anything that you want to add at this point? I think you were at our meeting when we first considered this, right?
Yes, sir, and I have nothing more to add. I appreciate your consideration.
Okay. All right. So any questions or comments from commissioners? If not, we're going to go around the horn on a roll call vote and we'll begin voting with Commissioner Wilson.
Yes, aye.
Commissioner Preisinger.
Aye.
Commissioner Bowder.
Aye.
An aye as the mayor votes aye. The ayes have it, vote is four to zero. So we've approved that particular ordinance, correct, Ms. Williamson?
That's correct.
Good deal. Next, ordinance 8136, special use permit, 1019 Ottawa Street.
Mr. Mayor and Commissioner, I do want to make one clarification on this item. This is a special use permit for a duplex at 1019 Ottawa Street. As a reminder, it requires a special use permit because the zoning in the area does not permit by right a multifamily dwelling. There have been no changes to the project since first consideration reading, but I did want to note that we, staff did indicate at the first consideration ordinance reading that there had been no public comment on this item. That is incorrect and I'll explain what happened with the confusion. So this item was at the planning commission first in June and at the June planning commission, there was a neighbor who did have a public comment and I believe he is here tonight to state that comment. That item was tabled at that planning commission meeting as they asked the developer for more information on the design of the duplex. So in July, when it came back to the planning commission, that was actually the night that it was voted on. There was no comment that night, but there was initial comment on that and I believe that gentleman is here tonight if he has any comments on that. But there, as far as what you saw in first consideration, there have been no changes to this project.
Does someone want to come to the podium and make some comments? Please state your name and address, please, sir.
Sure. Good evening, Mayor and Commissioner. Robert Patswald. I live at 514 North 11th. I'm directly west of the proposed site and I guess my concerns are really that the whole issue of issuing a special use permit for a duplex has really become more of a formality than it has a real study in whether the duplexes are warranted or justified. And in our particular area, we have a lot of homes that have now been converted into rental and I just can't believe that we need six more bedrooms on that site. The rental property is always a problem. I would like to say I talked to the new coordinator, Mr. Levine, today concerning a property east of this site. Very encouraging to talk to him. I think he's got his hands full. I can tell you, the young couple that lives south of me decided to move to Utah a couple of years ago. They put their house in a property management company. In about a year, they decided to come back. When they came back, their house was a total mess and, you know, we, as neighbors, went through living hell during that year with the renters. So, I mean, and believe me, I know you have good renters. I'm actually trustee over two pieces of property, so I have become a landlord, the last thing in life I ever wanted to do, but I have a good renter in there now. Everything's fine, but that isn't always the case. And I think when you get into an older neighborhood like that, like ours, and we have some good homeowner occupied housing and it's just really hard to maintain that. And I don't think that's really considered when they look at these special use permits. There's three more marginal pieces of property directly east of this site. They're probably going to be gone in the next few years. Probably ought to be gone now. What's going to go in there? Probably another duplex. I mean, it's really hard to keep single family when you see this much rental property coming into an area. So that's my point. And I actually, I had told Mr. Hurley that I'd abide by the planning commission decision. It became obvious there was a miscommunication. No animosity there, but I thought it was important I come make my point tonight, so.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Patswald. Any questions for Mr. Patswald?
No, no questions.
You'll want to come on up, just, I don't have a question. I understand your concern, but this is, this particular property is going into a lot, an area that doesn't have a structure on it now, correct?
That's correct.
I, you know, I'm supportive and I, obviously, I voted for it on first consideration and I'm still supportive of what is presented to us to approve under second consideration so we can approve this particular ordinance. But on that, I am aware of what you're saying with respect to the community overall within Leavenworth in terms of some of the downstream effects that happen as a result of things that probably, you know, we need to be taking a look at and trying to approve within the city. But this particular, I don't think with, I think what we're doing here is uncomfortable with it and I'm sure it will be some rental property. Hopefully, it'll be rented for at least market rate or above and that we'll have responsible property managers who manage the property. But I just wanted to give you my perspective that I do recognize what you're saying and I'm concerned about it, but it does not dissuade me from, you know, supporting what we're trying to do here, but then also addressing and being sensitive to what is happening downstream from having too many rental properties that aren't kept up. And I do think what you mentioned about Mr. Levine is important because that rental property coordinator, it's not a panacea, but I think it's a step, certainly a valid and important step forward for us to help with the rental properties and to keep them to the standard that they need to be, helping both the tenants and if we need to, putting the managers, the property managers and our owners on notice when they fall below those standards. So that's my input on the particular subject. I appreciate you coming by, Mr. Patswald. Yes?
Yes, I just wanted, I don't know if Mark wants to say.
Yeah, I have a question for Mr. Kramer. If we grant this and the builder pulls a building permit, does he have a finite amount of time to complete that building project or is it, is there?
No, the standard is essentially continual work once work has started, but that's not defined in any meaningful way. So just continual process. On a new build, it's less concerning because usually there's a bank loan involved or something like that and there's a rush to, but no, there is no timeline.
Okay. I just want to know, thank you.
Commissioner Bowder.
You know, right now, we're looking at our comprehensive plan for the next 10 years and as we look to the future, I understand wanting to have housing and everything to help pay taxes and that sort of thing, but we also have to look at the big picture. And my opinion is the same as before in that with the other two that we approved, they were in areas where there were other duplexes and other multifamily housing. I am opposed to a special use permit in an area where there's, where it's single family, where it's zoned, single family. And I'm not going to change my attitude on this. I don't care who it is. So I don't want, I don't want multifamily housing built in my neighborhood. There are some rental houses there, but I don't, I don't want that. And I'm sorry, the way it sounds, it's like not in my neighborhood, but it was, we're looking at the whole city and we're looking at a whole plan. We need to look at the proper zoning and proper development. If it needs to be zoned multifamily, then let's just zone everything multifamily and sometimes I think we might as well.
That's a good point and I think the comprehensive plan does offer us an opportunity right in front of us to deal with that. And you've been consistent, I mean, was it two weeks ago and I think this came on first consideration? So I understand where you stand on this particular matter and Commissioner Wilson, anything from your standpoint?
I'm in favor of it.
The only thing I might mention, I think I remember the last time there was a special use permit declined for a duplex. Been a long time ago. Special use to me means special. I went back and read the ordinance and it's really ambiguous. If it's benefiting the city, well, you know, you can write a, you can make almost anything a benefit to the city. So I would agree that if you're going to review that, it's probably easier right now to get a special use permit for a duplex than it is to get a variance to put up a higher fence. And I don't think that's in the best interest of anybody, so.
No, I think that's a good, a good point and I think that we're going to be able to get into some of those things and I think as a result of this process, we're going to ask these hard questions and that would be part of it and I appreciate that feedback and...
David Scott.
Oh, Mr., thank, thank Mr. Waters, our city attorney. Yes, sir.
I just want to, I'm, you know, this is not a matter or an issue that I have looked at or been a part of the approval process through this, but I do want to check if maybe if Julie's around or if anybody has looked at, would this be considered an override of a planning commission recommendation at this stage such that it would require a two-thirds override vote at this point? I want to make sure that we know what standards for approvals or for override are of a planning commission action right now before votes start getting counted. So I'm pulling up the code myself now, but just since I wasn't familiar with this application or having attended the planning commission meetings, I didn't know if Julie was there or somebody else who had, I hadn't looked at that yet.
David, our understanding is it would require a two-thirds majority to override the planning commission.
I believe so too, David. I'd have to pull that up real quick, but I believe if memory serves me, it does take a two-thirds to override.
So as the standard, as you know, that, you know, there can be, you know, you can adopt the planning commission's recommendation, override by a two-thirds vote or by a simple majority, you can send it back to the planning commission for further action and then with a statement as to your reasons for sending it back.
Well, we can also, this is ordinance number 8136 and we can, it's up for second consideration and we're going to take a roll call vote here and if we...
So I mean, yeah, I mean, this would be the question. If the vote, I mean, I would probably frame this then as a motion and if, you know, if the motion is to authorize that, then, you know, then we'll see what happens. But I just wanted to make sure everybody knew what the voting standards were here going into this.
So do we need to put a, put a motion on the, with the language of a motion?
That would be the first step, yeah.
Do you have any comments, Mr. Pen?
General comments or general comments, I think from staff's perspective and the planning commission's perspective, if you're going to address this larger scale, then you probably need to look at zoning and what you're going to allow when special use permits are, special use permits are used for everything from a daycare in a neighborhood to we've gone to use them a little bit more for these type of multifamily and single family districts. You know, as far as where we go with planning, there's a lot of movement in a lot of cities now to get rid of single family zoning and that, you know, you look for infill development and stuff like that. So it's a larger discussion if we want to get into the process by which you would grant variances or in this case, a special use permit outside of a district and that's a larger discussion I think we could get into. But on this item, I don't have anything else other than that and then a roll call would be appropriate at this time.
Okay.
Does the roll, do I need to make a motion though for the roll call or was that, was what, Mr.?
Right, so you do a roll call and see how the votes come out.
Okay. All right. Any other comments or questions from commissioners? If not, we're going to begin voting with Commissioner Preisinger.
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson.
Aye.
Commissioner Bowder.
No.
An aye as the mayor votes aye. The ayes have it, three to one. So we've approved second consideration and ordinance number 8136. Is there anything else we need to do with this particular agenda item?
No.
Okay.
Good.
Thank you. Ordinance 8137, special use permit, 1906 Cleveland Terrace.
Mr. Mayor and Commissioner, this again is another special use permit. There have been no changes since the first consideration. This is an existing structure, applying for a special use permit essentially to commit to compliance.
Any questions or comments on this particular agenda item? We're going to have, there are no questions. We're going to have a roll call vote and we're going to begin voting with Commissioner Wilson.
Aye.
Commissioner Preisinger.
Aye.
Commissioner Bowder.
Aye.
An aye as the mayor votes aye. The ayes have it, the vote is four to zero. So this particular ordinance number 8137 has been approved as it was presented for second consideration. Next is ordinance 8138, special use permit, 4320 Used Road.
Mr. Mayor and Commissioner, this second reading has also not changed from the first consideration. There have been no additions or changes to the project. As a quick reminder to the commission and the public, this is a special use permit for a 196-foot tall AT&amp;T communications tower that would increase service throughout the city. It required a special use permit because I believe the standard is 170 feet, so it's a little bit larger than normal regulations.
What was the company that came in and was it AT&amp;T?
That was AT&amp;T.
But they did mention, that gentleman who was in here did mention that there's room for other companies to go in.
I believe two more carriers could be accommodated on the...
That need arises, so that's the only thing that I wanted to point out. Any other questions or comments on this particular agenda item? Requires a roll call vote, so we're going to begin voting with Commissioner Preisinger.
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson.
Aye.
Commissioner Bowder.
Aye.
An aye as the mayor votes aye. The ayes have it, four to zero. Motion carries, so we've approved that second consideration and approval of ordinance number 8138. Next is ordinance 8139, CARES Act funding.
Mr. Mayor and Commissioner, again, this, there have been no changes since first consideration reading on this item briefly on this topic. This is related to potential funds available to the city that started at the federal government with the CARES Act or the Relief Act from the COVID-19 pandemic. Those then reached the state. The state determined the allocation method would start at the county levels and then individual cities would apply to the county for funds based on a certain allocation. There were two requirements that came down from the state, one being that the city passed this ordinance that you're seeing here on for second consideration and the second being that a spend plan be submitted to your local county. The city did meet our deadline and submit a spend plan to Leavenworth County and Leavenworth County, I believe, has to have that approved and put to the state by the end of this month and then we will know more about our ability to access those funds. But the only action before you tonight is the second consideration of the required ordinance to be eligible for CARES Act funding for the city of Leavenworth.
Pretty straightforward. Any questions or comments for the city? Yes.
Do we get to see that spend plan?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments on this particular agenda item? If not, it requires a roll call vote and we are going to begin voting on this with Commissioner Wilson. Commissioner Preisinger.
Aye.
Commissioner Bowder.
Aye.
An aye as the mayor votes aye. The ayes have it, four to zero. So we've approved the second consideration of this ordinance number 8139. Next is ordinance 8140, special assessments unpaid 2018 manual stormwater fees.
Our city clerk, Carla Williamson, will handle the next three items.
Mayor and Commissioner, this is second consideration ordinance for unpaid 2019 manual stormwater fees as this was reviewed last, at the last meeting. We had some properties that were inadvertently left off from the list that was sent over to the county for the 2018 collection of the fees and so we did manual billings of those and gave citizens opportunity to pay those directly to us. And the list that's attached here are the properties that still remain unpaid, so we'll have those assessed to the taxes.
Were there any citizens that did anything between our meeting two weeks ago?
No, there were no payments between last week and this week.
Any questions or comments for our city clerk, Ms. Williamson? Also, this requires a roll call vote and so we are going to begin voting with Commissioner Preisinger.
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson.
Aye.
Commissioner Bowder.
Aye.
An aye as the mayor votes aye. The ayes have it, four to zero. So we've approved second consideration of ordinance number 8140. Next is ordinance 8141, special assessments unpaid demolition costs.
And this one is the cost to the city to demolish certain properties. Those properties are listed on the ordinance and we have had no payments of those since it was presented for first consideration.
Okay. Any questions or comments for the city clerk, Ms. Williamson, on this particular agenda item? Requires a roll, roll call vote and we are going to begin voting with Commissioner Wilson. Commissioner Preisinger.
Aye.
Commissioner Bowder.
Aye.
An aye as the mayor votes aye. The ayes have it, four to zero. We've then approved the second consideration of ordinance number 8141. Next is ordinance 8142, special assessments nuisance abatement costs. Next is ordinance eighty-one forty-two, special assessments nuisance abatement costs.
Mayor and Commissioner, this is the annual, um, submission of the special assessments for the abasement of nuisance costs, that's basically the mowings of properties, there can be other, um, other things that we do other than mowing, uh, removal of brush trees, things like that, but basically it's the mowing fees, um, and so this was presented, um, at the July twenty-eighth meeting, we have had a couple of, um, line items that were paid, um, we removed a couple because we found out, um, after reviewing it and going over it again, there was a couple that, um, we had, the city had taken over the property, um, and so we removed those, um, but other than that, there have been no other changes. This will be published in full in the, um, time, so anybody who may have something on here would still have an opportunity and know that there's a fee that can, is due, they still have an opportunity to pay directly to us before, we have a little bit of, a window of time before it gets assessed to the taxes, we can still make some adjustments.
Well, it's good to know at least some of the names have come off there because the people have paid, I mean, I know it's not a great number, but it's better than it was two weeks ago. Any other questions or comments for the city clerk on this particular agenda item?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
Uh, there's a couple very egregious, uh, charges here on a couple of properties, one for twenty-nine hundred and forty-seven dollars, uh, Wesley property, two thirteen South Tenth, I'm familiar with that, uh, and there's a thirty-five hundred dollar charge at six-twenty-five Oak Street. These are residential lots, are they not, they are not parks or, uh, I'm fairly familiar with six-twenty-five Oak and two thirteen South Tenth, um, are these rental properties? Are these, uh, people that manage the rental property?
Without, um, my full documentation on here, these are, um, they could have been mowed for the entire year, since last summer to this summer. They also, when you see some of the larger ones, they also could have had, and I don't know, I'd have to look at these more in depth, but maybe we had to remove a tree from a property, or it took a little bit more, um, abatement of some issues, um, with the, the property rather than just mowing.
But each one of these property owners had the opportunity to do this themselves?
Correct, they are sent a letter by code enforcement, and then they are sent an invoice, um, each month, when they do the monthly invoice, saying, um, they're sending a copy of the invoice.
And I'm unsure on these two property owners, uh, Wesley, Mr. and Mrs. Wesley, and Mr. Mister, uh, is it, uh, a Mr. Hudspeth, I don't know if they are landlords or if they're owner occupied, uh, but those are egregious, and I do believe that they may be the landlords, and those are things that, as we go further with our, uh, rental coordinator and different things that we do at the city, that, uh, if they are in fact landlords and these types of things go on, uh, I'm not proud to have them as landlords, if in fact they are landlords, because that's, that's a responsibility that the landlord should take, and it's, uh, very frustrating that they don't.
Good point. Any other questions or comments on this particular agenda item? Thank you, Commissioner Preisinger. So ordinance number eighty-one forty-two is now presented for second consideration and requires a roll call vote, and we are going to begin voting with Commissioner Preisinger.
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson. Commissioner Bowder.
Aye.
And aye as the mayor vote aye, the ayes have it, four to zero, motion carries, so we've, um, approved, uh, ordinance number eighty-one forty-two, which was presented for second consideration.
And Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to add, uh, for those that don't have the agenda, that that represents a hundred and six thousand dollars in mowing charges that we've, uh, done, whether it be this year or for this period of time, and we, the city, are not in the grass mowing business for private property, and we, uh, we used to only charge, what, if somebody charges twenty-five dollars to mow it, we charged the occupant twenty-five dollars. Well, a lot of people are gaming the system, so I can't even buy a lawnmower for, you know, it'd take me three years to pay off my lawnmower that the city's going to mow it for, so now we put, but a hundred dollars for the first time we mow it in addition to the mowing charge, two fifty for the second time, five hundred extra admin charge, uh, on, it, these incremental increases, so.
Correct.
If you don't want to mow your lawn, you're basically going to pay us over a thousand dollars a year just on administrative fees in addition to the cost of the mowing, and we welcome a hundred and six thousand dollars, but, uh, really, it's a personal responsibility to these homeowners, property owners.
Good point. So we are going to move on to the next agenda item, which is review unsafe structure eleven-zero-nine.
With public comment first.
Oh.
New business.
Why, yeah, why did I miss, I'm sorry, we do, this new business, they were so long, I thought we were past new business, but that's a mistake on my part. Uh, public comment, and I think we did, we did have something for public comment.
I did receive one email, and I can read that to you.
Sure.
It was received from John B. Bargary, and it is a copy of a letter that was sent to Commissioner Preisinger, and I'm not sure if all the commissioners received one or not, but it was, he wanted the same comment that he had, had submitted, and it says, um, "I'm a longtime resident of the city, and I am writing to express my concern about building a public sidewalk in front of my residence at eleven oh one Michigan, Leavenworth, Kansas. The sidewalk would lead to dead end, on both ends, to dead end, not joining to other sidewalks in the neighborhood, not building the sidewalk would provide, um, little more dollars to the city, uh, Leavenworth City budget, bringing increased growth by myself, um, and concerned citizens of Leavenworth, and thus providing a better economy to our city." And that was John B. Bargary.
So, is he advocating for the sidewalk or not?
No.
Okay, right.
Okay.
I can provide the commission some context on that in a memo to the commission, I don't think it's fair to comment without Mr. Bargary here, but I'll provide the commission some information on the, on the item.
That sounds like a good plan to me.
How do you spell, uh, Bargary? B-A-R-G-A-R-Y?
That's correct.
Okay. How, how, B-A-R?
B-A-R-A-G-A-R-Y.
A-G, okay.
Okay. Yeah, I spelled it wrong. Okay, um, so we're going to do what, uh, the city manager just spoke to us about, and uh, thank you, Mr. Bargary, for your comment under, uh, in your email, uh, for us to, to hear that this evening, and we will, city manager and/or the commission will get, get back on him, I think, right, or?
Uh, I will provide you with some information, that'll be with the commission.
And then we can, right.
Thank you.
All right, next is, uh, under general items, under new business, review unsafe structure eleven oh nine Spruce Damage by Fire.
Uh, this will be handled by our public works director, Mike McDonald.
Okay, Mr. McDonald, how you doing?
Thank you, sir, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, uh, I also have Halper Det, uh, chief building official here with me as well, uh, this is related to a fire damage structure that was damaged in October of two thousand and nineteen, the, uh, city staff originally recommended, uh, that this be extended by the commission, however, since the time that the, uh, false report was completed, uh, the, uh, property owner, uh, contractor has completed essentially all of the work that would be necessary for the staff to change our recommendation, uh, to, uh, recommend returning the insurance proceeds, uh, to the owner. Uh, this is, uh, uh, what we see from time to time, property owners, uh, do the work that's necessary, and, uh, we would like to, uh, satisfy our requirements and return them to, uh, the, the funds to them. And then, and in this case, the current owner, uh, is different than the previous owner, the previous owner had the insurance policy, and he would, the check will be made out to the previous owner, not the current owner, who is also the contractor.
In, in addition to the check, Mr. McDonald, part of our policy paper here was a recommendation that we allow up to another ninety days for repairs to be made to eleven oh nine Spruce Street, does that, does that need to be part of our motion too?
No, um, he's, we're changing the recommendation based on work done since the policy report was written.
Okay, go ahead.
I got it, understand. Thank you, any other questions or comments for Mr. McDonald?
Quick one, Mr. McDonald, uh, so we're going to cut the ten thousand dollar check, whatever it is, to the former owner, and then it's between the former owner and the new owner to get together and pass that money, if you will, we're, we're completely out of it at that point, is that correct?
That, that's, that's correct, and in this case, the, uh, the insurance policy was held solely by the original owner, to our knowledge, there's no other agreement, uh, so we will return it, uh, to whence it came.
And the new owner realizes that's, uh, the procedure and the policy?
Yes, sir.
Okay, okay.
Could I suggest that when, um, the motion is made to, um, it would be to release the insurance proceeds and to remove the property from the unsafe and dangerous list? I wondered about that.
Okay, okay. Okay, um, can I have a motion from one of my fellow commissioners for this particular agenda item?
I move that, um, we, uh, the city release, um, the check from the insurance proceeds for ten thousand five hundred to the, um, previous owner, the person holding the insurance, um, at eleven oh nine Spruce, and also to remove that property from the unsafe structures list.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion in the second on this particular agenda item, we are going to begin voting with Commissioner Wilson.
Yes, uh.
Commissioner Preisinger.
Aye.
Commissioner Bowder.
Aye.
And aye as the mayor vote aye, the ayes have it, four to zero, motion carries, so we've, uh, approved the motion for this particular agenda item, which was the unsafe structure eleven oh nine Spruce, thank you. We have a public hearing we're going to need to open, so, um, we next have a public hearing, unsafe slash dangerous fire damage structure, seven twenty-three South Tenth Street, uh, do I have a motion?
I move to open the public hearing.
Second.
There's a motion in the second to open the public hearing, we're going to begin voting with Commissioner Preisinger.
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson. Commissioner Bowder.
Aye.
And aye as the mayor vote aye, motion carries, so we are now in a public hearing, we've opened a public hearing, so staff and public comments are next.
Mr. Mayor and Commissioner, I will again turn this item over to our public works director, Mike McDonald.
Okay. Mr. McDonald?
Thank you, sir. Uh, thank you, sir, and, uh, Mr. Mayor, uh, Commissioners, this is a similar case as previously, however, this is earlier in the process, the policy report notes that there was, uh, fire damage to the structure in April of nineteen, two thousand and nineteen, it was actually April of two thousand and twenty, we apologize for that error, uh, since the fire, the property owner has arranged for a contractor, uh, to begin work, uh, they have a permit, and they have performed, uh, nearly all of the tasks necessary for city staff to recommend, uh, return of the insurance proceeds, uh, it's my understanding, at the current time, the House, uh, needs siding, uh, with the, uh, nationwide pandemic, the siding plans are behind, and as consequence, they do not have siding, uh, necessary to complete the repairs, uh, however, uh, they have proceeded, uh, quite, uh, nicely through the rest of the project, the staff recommendation would be that the property owner would be given a ninety additional days to complete the repairs, uh, and at which point then the money, uh, from the insurance proceeds can be returned to the owner.
Okay. Pretty straightforward, I think.
So you're not asking us to return it today?
You're not asking us to return it today, are you, Mr. McDonald?
That is correct, sir.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions or comments on this particular agenda item? If not, we've got to go ahead and close the public hearing.
Might be some public comments.
Okay, yeah, any, public comment? Is there somebody, uh, either in the, in the city chambers?
Is there on the call?
On a call.
Okay. Go ahead, sir, uh, or ma'am, identify yourself and your address, please. Is, uh, is there somebody on the call, uh, that wants to comment on this particular agenda item?
Uh, this is Chris Pramow, the contractor with ATP Restoration, performing the repairs at seven twenty-three South Tenth Street, uh, just, uh, just to inform, uh, everyone, uh, we have already begun to install the, uh, or delivered appliance to the interior of the house, all the flooring, trim, paint, it's, uh, it's all complete, uh, the siding, I got confirmation from the siding company that the delivery will be made, uh, next week, and, uh, within fourteen days, we will have all the interior siding completed, and I will be calling for a final inspection and ready for the move-in of the, of the homeowners from the, uh, uh, the first of September.
Wow.
So ninety days should be more than enough, sir, right?
Absolutely.
And Mr. McDonald, that doesn't? Go ahead.
Uh, we can bring this, uh, back, uh, once they meet the, uh, requirements for returning the funds, uh, to inform the commission.
That's good.
Okay.
Is, uh, Mr. McDonald or Mr. Kramer or Mr. Waters, uh, can we, uh, in a motion here, if you, uh, if it passes, uh, all the inspections, can we authorize someone here to return the money, or must it take a commission motion? I don't want it to delay, if, if they've done what they need to do, I don't want to have to wait, you know, another couple of weeks or something.
I think if you wanted to word it that way, that would be fine, you know, this is something that is for the benefit of the city, um, you know, this is something so that the city doesn't have to, uh, come in and make repairs, and so if the city wants to waive, you know, that, uh, you know, you can, you can do that at any time you want, you know, the law allows you to retain the funds to secure performance, uh, but the city is not required to, and this can direct staff at certain levels to go ahead and make those decisions, if the city commissioner would like to, uh, you know, delegate that authority to another decision maker.
Mr. Waters, since this motion this evening is to approve the resolution, um, allowing, giving whatever amount of time.
Yeah.
And I, I can certainly amend that.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I, I guess I was going with, it depends on what you actually want to do, I understand it's been drawn up a certain way, but if you wanted to modify that, well, you could.
Okay.
I don't know, I'd, I'd prefer to keep things simple, but, um, I, but I.
Uh, I opened up a can of worms, I'm sorry.
It's okay, I just, I, I, I think maybe we can, at a study session, we can discuss that, um, you know, in terms of whether we want to, but I just think we need to stick with what.
Yeah.
We're dealing with here in terms of the, um.
Yeah, I agree, yeah.
Yeah.
In terms of the time, and, uh, we'll go from there. Any other questions or comments?
So, so we're, we're.
We need, we need, well, we need, we need to first, are there any other comments for pub, for this particular agenda? If not, we'll go ahead and.
Oh, close it, yeah.
Accept a motion to close the public hearing?
Close the public hearing.
There's a second?
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second to close our public hearing on this unsafe, dangerous fire damage structure, seven twenty-three South Tenth Street. We are going to begin voting with Commissioner Wilson. Commissioner Preisinger.
Aye.
Commissioner Bowder.
Aye.
And aye as the mayor vote aye, the ayes have it, four to zero, motion carries, so we've closed the public hearing. And we need to go now to adopt Resolution B twenty-two fifty-nine, but that's what's been talked about, any other comments or questions on this particular resolution?
No.
Okay, so I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt Resolution B twenty-two fifty-nine as presented.
Could you just include to give ninety days, because the resolution didn't have that amount in it?
Okay, and, uh, we've ex, uh, extended, uh, the property owner, uh, uh, ninety days from today till approximately November eleventh to complete the repairs.
Okay, there's a motion and a second on this particular agenda item, we're going to begin voting with Commissioner Preisinger.
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson. Commissioner Bowder.
Aye.
And aye as the mayor vote aye, the ayes have it, four to zero, motion carries, so we've approved, uh, the resolution number B twenty-two fifty-nine, giving the owners ninety days to complete the repairs. We have another public hearing, hold on, please, just a minute.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, uh, I meant to do this beginning of the meeting, we, we've got, I think, a couple folks here on a particular, uh, item, and I, and I meant to ask if we could rearrange the, uh, the agenda on item number fourteen, I'm wondering if we could jump to that one and then go back, these folks have been sitting out here for forty-five minutes.
Sure, and what, what is fourteen is, um, what?
The diagonal parking First United Methodist Church.
First Methodist.
And I meant to do that at the beginning of the meeting, and I'm sorry, but, uh, Mr. Chucky does need a, a civics lesson, so I think he learned a lot, so I'm glad that he was here.
I, I don't mind doing that, do we need to make a motion to, to modify the agenda to, or to do that, or?
No, I don't believe so.
Okay, so I can just, okay, yeah, we, we certainly can do that, better than, we don't have to, uh, you know, do a, do a motion specifically for that, so we'll, we'll take fourteen, which is consider diagonal parking four hundred blocks of Chestnut Street, First United Methodist Church, and, um, hold on a minute, I'm going to bring that up, is, uh, who's going to take the lead on this?
Uh, Mr. McDonald will take the lead, and then we will turn it over to, um, our guests to talk a little bit about the project, so Mike, if you want to kick it off.
Go ahead, Mr. McDonald.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, this is a request from the United, First United Methodist Church to address some of the parking concerns they have for their parishioners. And it is proposed that they will create diagonal parking off of the alley that is adjacent to the large vacant lot immediately east of the, of their church. In addition to that, they would create diagonal parking on Chestnut Street where there's currently parallel parking. The net impact of this is to add 17 spaces on the alley, and they will add 16 diagonal spaces on Chestnut Street, and they will lose the 10 existing parallel spaces for a net gain of six. Overall, that's 23 spaces. This is something we have worked with their engineer, their contractor, and with representatives of the church, and they have submitted a plan for that on the second page of the policy report. You'll see the parking, parking shown. As part of this, they will relocate the public sidewalk on Chestnut Street to the north, which will be on their property, and we've requested that they would submit an easement in favor of the city for public sidewalk purposes, so that the public will be able to walk along the street sidewalk as they do now. They have provided all of the documents that we have requested. Staff has reviewed this and finds that the plans are in order, and that we recommend that the city commission approve this parking project and accept the sidewalk easement.
Okay. How about comments from our citizens who may be here from the church or the contractor that's doing this work? You can come forward, just state your name and address, please.
Sure, be a lot of people. Good evening. My name is Ed Garvin. I'm the Director of Operations at the First United Methodist Church. We did submit the easement paperwork yesterday.
For the sidewalk?
For the sidewalk.
Okay.
Yeah, for the north side sidewalk, and, and we appreciate everybody's consideration on this. We just want to move forward with our partners in the First Presbyterian Church, because it's gonna give them parking, it's gonna give us parking as we start expanding activities in the Old East High School lot.
Right.
That's our overall goal. We have a large green space. We want people to be able to start using it, parking there, walking around it. We also have a request in to join the sidewalk participation for the, to repair the sidewalk on Fourth Street.
Okay, good.
So.
And so what are you looking at? I mean, assuming that we approve the staff, staff's recommendation, what are you looking at as far as the timeline to complete this project?
We would start next week.
Okay.
Be done in two to three weeks.
That's great.
Two to three weeks?
Okay.
Okay.
Any questions or comments for Mr. Garvin?
Mr. Garvin, parking on Chestnut between Fourth and Fifth, that, that becomes public parking.
Correct.
And obviously, for the most part, on Sundays, it'll be all First United Methodist Church. I think there's five houses on the south side. But the parking in the alley is private parking, yours and the Presbyterian Church, is it not?
Technically, it is private parking.
But I know you're not gonna go out there.
You know, our goal is to open up the green space.
Okay.
To use it for the community. Long term, we would like to see, you know, we, we have plans, we have desires to make that into a, to put a pavilion in there.
Sure.
To open it up and have activities. But it's been 10 years since East was dropped.
Yeah.
And it's time to use the space.
Good. And the repair of the Fourth Street, North and South, from the alley to Chestnut, you're using the 50/50 program with the city?
Uh, we, we have put that request in, so I'm just waiting for Mr. McDonald and his department to get back with us.
And the new sidewalk on Chestnut from Fourth to Fifth, they're moving it north, I don't know, 15 feet or something, does that even qualify for the 50/50, Mr. Kramer or Mr. McDonald? Or is that not something that can be applied to the new sidewalk?
50/50 is usually for sidewalk repair projects or sidewalk replacement projects.
Yeah, that, my, yeah, my understanding, because now we have a new construction going on from an already existing location.
Okay.
Yeah, we're just asking for that assistance on the east side.
Yeah.
Of the field for Fourth Street.
I know many people would be happy that you're fixing that up on Fourth Street, because it's, it is in need of repair. A lot of people do walk along there, so it, it'll be a welcome addition.
Thank you. Anything else, Mr. Garvin?
Not at all.
Does anybody else from the church or wanna come up and say anything?
Who's your contractor for the concrete? Does he wanna say anything? Does he wanna talk?
Mr. Geiger. Nobody else is, sir. We've got a good product, we're glad to share.
You gotta come up and speak up. Speaker, Mr. Geiger, you gotta be on TV.
Give him a break.
I just thank you for cooperation. You're all doing a good job, appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Garvin.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Garvin.
Thank you.
So any other questions or comments for Mr. McDonald or city manager or anybody else on this particular agenda item? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I moved approval of the conversion of the on-street parallel parking to diagonal parking in the right-of-way on Chestnut Street and accept the sidewalk easement as described in this process.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion in the second on this particular agenda item. We are going to begin voting with Commissioner Priceiger.
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson.
Amen. Aye.
Commissioner Bowder.
Aye.
An aye as the mayor vote aye. The ayes have it four to zero. This motion carries, so we've approved this particular agenda item. Good luck, and you don't, you need to stick around unless you want some more sitting.
I do all.
My apologies again.
Thank you, guys.
Yeah, back to the oars. Okay, we're going to have to open another public hearing, and this is on the 2021 Budget and Capital Improvement Plan. So can I have a motion on opening a public hearing, please?
So moved.
Second. There's a motion in the second to open a public hearing on the 2021 Budget and Capital Improvement Plan. We are going to begin voting with Commissioner Wilson. Commissioner Priceiger.
Aye.
Commissioner Bowder.
Aye.
An aye as the mayor vote aye. Ayes have it four to zero. Motion carries, so we are now in a public hearing for the Budget and Capital Improvement Plan. Let me see, staff and citizen, citizen comments? Do we have anybody on the line from the citizenry to?
No.
Okay, so is this gonna be Mr. Kramer probably, right?
Yes, Mr. Mayor and Commission, the budget process is before you tonight for your final approval, at which time the city will submit it to Leavenworth County as required by state statute for final adoption of the 2021 operating budget and the 2021 through 2024 capital improvements plan. I will just briefly go through some of the budget highlights. It's been since July 7th, when I presented the budget overview to the city commission, and then on Friday, July 10th, when we held all-day budget meetings that were open to the public and were covered by the Leavenworth Times. And subsequent to that, the draft budget has been posted on the city's website. The 2021 operating budget is a balanced budget as required by law. It builds on the city's goals to provide high-quality services and maintaining sound financial standing. The biggest note of the 2021 operating budget was it was crafted in what I believe is the most fiscally uncertain period in recent history. For all of the hardships created by the pandemic related to the city's financial resources, the most challenging aspect of setting the 2021 budget was determining what the impact on the economy will be between the next six to 18 months. The first consideration we had to sort of deal with was our 2020 sales tax. The city is funded 45% by sales tax, which is uncommon in our county and pretty high in, in the area. So what shortfalls would be potentially created if we had severe shortfalls in 2020, the year that we are in now? To date, right now, we only have sales tax data through May, and so you're dealing at the time of the budget creation with no sales tax data on how the COVID pandemic was going to affect the city's ability to operate in 2020, what reserves we might need to use, and how that may affect our ability in the future to borrow money and to operate the city. The second X factor, of course, was the 2021 sales tax. The very early indication is that the city has not fared as bad as some of our neighboring communities in Johnson County and some other surrounding areas, Topeka and Lawrence and such. But we were conservative, very conservative as far as our estimates, estimating a flat sales tax rate. There were thoughts early on, before we got some more information, about budgeting a sales tax decrease of 1% or 2% or 3%, which would have been a huge number for the city of Leavenworth. CARES Act funding. We mentioned earlier tonight in one of our meeting items that CARES Act funding is potentially out there. It's becoming more and more real. The number for the city of Leavenworth is potentially $6.7 million on that. Until it is in our bank account, we are not going to count on those funds, but we'll be prepared to use them to offset budget shortfalls and to make sure we get all the programs and projects done, should we receive those funds. And then, of course, the effects on development and investment. What will next year look like as far as any new development, property tax growth, our development community, both business, commercial, retail, and residential? The other things that we looked at were ensuring that we did not squander some of the reserve position that Ruby and her team, the city commission, by putting in a budget reserve policy, and Taylor and I at the administration level have worked on for the number of years to return us to a strong reserve position. And so as we went through the turmoil this year and got ready to issue our debt, Moody's Investor Services looked at our strong financial standing, and we were able to maintain our bond rating, which is something that's important to city staff, the commission, and should be to the community going forward. A couple of quick highlights on revenue highlights. Based on our ability to operate a refuse department, the switches we've made, both internally to even out our trash days, the change that we made to waste management, the commission's and the, and the community's generosity as far as giving us equipment and trucks on a replacement schedule resulted in us not requesting any rate increase for refuse for next year. So that's good. And then we had a modest sewer rate increase of 3%. And I wanted to, again, hit on that these are mandates that are passed down. We hear unfunded mandates a lot. That was a, a big word over the last three to five years and, and even before that. But for sewer, it's especially important because of the disinfection processes that we are required to do, but receive no funds for those. So in this case, our UV disinfection process requires a lighting system that bulbs can range in $100,000 to $200,000 to replace those light bulbs that return our water to levels that meet state regulations. So there is a 3% rate increase based on the operational requirements of the wastewater treatment plant. So for the operating budget, the final thing I wanted to hit on is that there are no cuts to the police department, the fire department, code enforcement, building inspection. There's very little supplemental items, but city operations are not affected negatively in the 2021 proposed operating budget. The CIP budget, that is our capital improvements program. That's where we essentially do projects out of. That is solely funded by sales tax. And so when you're looking at a budget that is only funded by sales tax, you have to be even more conservative, given the uncertainty around sales tax. So the first thing that we did is continue the city commission's priority of focusing on roads to the exclusion of a few other parks types projects and some other sort of amenities. We kept the road program at $2 million. We'll see the first $2 million project start here in about less than 30 days, and we wanted to continue that momentum, so that budget is included for $2 million going forward. We continue to battle the additional storage requirements of the police department, body cam, and dash cam video storage, but that is a priority of the commission and the community. So we included funds to adequately account for that data. We budgeted for the replacement of a 1992 fire department aerial truck. This is the largest truck in our fleet. It's in excess of $1 million. It helps us maintain our fire rating, our ISO rating, and it's well due for replacement. Just a couple other quick highlights. We focused on public safety, two new police patrol vehicles, one new detective vehicle, one animal control van, and a replacement to the police K-9 for 2021. And then we have our normal ongoing debt allocations. I wanted to make one more note on the CIP. As I mentioned to the commission on July 7th and July 10th, we have adopted a tiered approach. Therefore, if revenues for the rest of 2020 meet our original estimates and/or revenue for 2021 come in higher than flat, which is what we have, we will start, we will be ready with the projects that we've delayed, the first one on there being the Doerty Park Playground Equipment Replacement Program, and then a number of other CIP projects. So in, in conclusion, there is no mill rate for city-supported funds, modest utility rate increases, 3% for sanitary sewer or wastewater, and 0% for refuse. If there's any questions on these two budget items, I'm here to answer those. I'd also like to thank Ruby Maline, our finance director, Brandon Mills, our deputy finance director, and Taylor Tetter, our assistant city manager, for their hours of work put in on the creation of the budget and the work to maintain the commission's priorities, the things that are important to citizens, such as infrastructure and public safety, while dealing with the uncertainty of the global economy. If there's any questions, I'm here to answer them.
Any questions or comments for the city manager on this particular agenda item and the fact that we're in a public hearing? Any questions or comments?
Just, it's a, it's a real touch, it's an iffy time right now, and I think you guys have done an excellent job of putting this together and making it easy to understand for the public.
I echo Commissioner Bowder's comments there and also the city manager's comments in terms of, you've been working on this for months. You've done a good job getting all the input from the staff and sorting through the issues, and it was presented to us very professionally, and, and we were able to do our business over the last couple of months on, on the budget. So thank you, Ms. Maline, and let your staff know that we're very appreciative of the professionalism that was shown. Hasn't been shown in, in previous budget cycles, but particularly this year with everything going on, all the variables. And there's nobody on the phone, correct? No input from the public? So I think we're gonna, I'll, anybody else? If nobody else has a comment, we'll go ahead and I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion in the second to close the public hearing on this Budget and Capital Improvement Plan. We are going to begin voting with Commissioner Priceiger.
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson.
Aye.
Commissioner Bowder.
Aye.
An aye as the mayor vote aye. The ayes have it. Motion carries. Ayes have it four to zero. The motion carries, so we have closed the public hearing. So we, anything else we need to do on that? Hold on a minute.
We need to move to adopt the budget?
Yeah, yeah, yes, we do. So yes, we need to do that. Any discussion of what we just discussed, adopt resolution? Well, it's, we have to do two things, right? Adopt the 2021 City Operating Budget and 2021 through 2025 Capital Improvement Plan. That would be the first motion, correct, Ms. Williamson?
That's correct.
Okay, can, can I have a motion from one of the commissioners to do that, please?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt this 2021 City Operating Budget and 2021 through 2025 Capital Improvement Plan as presented.
Second.
There's a motion in the second on this particular agenda item. We are going to begin voting with Commissioner Wilson. Commissioner Priceiger.
Aye.
Commissioner Bowder.
Aye.
An aye as the mayor vote aye. So the ayes have it, motion carries, so we've adopted the 2021 City Operating Budget and 2021 through 2025 Capital Improvement Plan. The next is to adopt the 2021 Housing Budget Planners 2 Resolution B 2260. So any questions or comments on, on this? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt the 2021 Housing Budget for Planners 2 Resolution B 2260 as presented.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion in the second on this particular agenda item, and we are going to begin voting with Commissioner Wilson. Commissioner Priceiger.
Aye.
Commissioner Bowder.
Aye.
An aye as the mayor vote aye. The ayes have it four to zero. So the motion carries, so we've approved the housing budget, Resolution B 2260. So we've approved the housing budget, resolution B 2260. Next agenda item is resolution B 2261 declaring necessity to appropriate property connected with the 16th Terrace Stormwater Project, I believe. Mr. McDonald, is he gonna take the lead on this, or?
Yeah, Mike McDonald, our public works director.
Mr. McDonald, whenever you're ready.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. Mr. Mayor, commissioners, this is related to the drainage project on 16th Terrace between 16th Street and 16th Terrace and south of Thornton Street and north of Vilas. This is a continuation of the project that was completed a couple of years ago with the north end of 16th Terrace with the detention basin and some pipe replacements. Steph has prepared plans. They are complete. We have, we are prepared to go to bid on phase two and possibly phase three, depending on funding resources. The, it is necessary that the city obtain easements to give us permission to be in people's backyards to do this work. There are 30 property owners, there are 30 temporary easements and four permanent easements. The, the city has contacted all of the related property owners and received quite a number of signed easement agreements for the project. However, there are some property owners that have not responded and others that have responded with detailed questions. As part of the process, we have, our staff has met with property owners that have requested onsite meetings. In the past, we have had public information meetings, but with the pandemic, we weren't sure how to handle that. But as the project is moving forward, we have contracted with John Amrin of the land company to act as our agent to contact the property owners and negotiate satisfactory arrangements for the temporary and the permanent easements. We are fairly, we want to make sure that people understand that these easements are needed for this project. However, the protection of private property rights is a very important key American principle. And for the government, such as the city, to take an action that would require property owners to give up portions of their property for a government project, there is a fairly, I won't say complicated, but it is a somewhat lengthy process. We believe we have reached the point where negotiations and discussions with individual property owners will not result in the easements that we need for this project. The first step of the process is adopting the resolution stating the intent of the government to use what is termed eminent domain, which is colloquially known as condemnation. The rest of the process is on the second page of the policy report that follows. I will state that on the Thornton project, we were in a similar situation about a year ago, or a little longer than that. We asked the city commission to adopt this resolution, and ultimately, we were able to obtain all of the easements we needed without going further into the eminent domain process. If the city commission chooses to adopt this resolution, the next step will be to bring you an ordinance that identifies the property descriptions and the names of the owners, at which point, if the commission chooses to move forward, that will be adopted as an ordinance. And then, it goes into the district court system, where a judge will appoint appraisers to review the project and the process and the values and the needs. And ultimately, at the conclusion of the district court process, if the judge finds that is a reasonable request, that they will, will identify the value that has been placed on the easements, and the city will then be in a position to pay to obtain the easements. If the property owners at the conclusion of this process do not believe they have been treated fairly, their appeal is to the court related to the value of the easements, not necessarily to the need for the easements. And this is a lengthy process. It can take 60 to 90 days. We hope we don't have to go that far into the process to obtain the easements that we need for the project. In addition, the city is responsible for our attorney fees with the court, filing fees, appraiser fees, particularly the ones that are appointed by the judge, and ultimately, the compensation that would be recommended by the court. This recommendation this evening is to adopt the ordinance declaring the necessity to appropriate private property associated with this project, and if we need to go further, we will bring you additional policy reports and information.
What, Mr. McDonald, we were down to, seventeen property owners with a total of nineteen easements that have not been signed? Is that, is that currently the situation?
That is correct. There's, I believe, seventeen, between the two phases, there are seventeen property owners and nineteen easements that we need to obtain. We have talked with our right-of-way agent, John Amrin, and he is making, he believes, progress with several of the property owners that he has talked to, getting very specific questions asked and responding to them. So we believe we will see additional signed easements before this has to go too much further.
And what did we start off with? Were there about thirty property owners that we needed to get signed easements from? Was it about thirty or a little bit more?
Yeah, there were thirty properties on this phase of the project, and there were four permanent easements, and we need a temporary easement from each of the properties.
Okay, all right. Any questions or comments for Mr. McDonald on this particular agenda item? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I move approval of resolution B 2261 regarding the appropriation of private property for public purposes for the 16th Street Terrace and Thornton Phase Two and Phase Three Drainage Project.
Second.
Motion and a second for this particular agenda item. We are going to begin voting with Commissioner Wilson.
Aye.
Commissioner Priceiger.
Aye.
Commissioner Bowder.
Aye.
An aye is the mayor vote aye. The ayes have it, four to zero, motion carries. So we've approved resolution B 2261. Thank you, Mr. McDonald, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next, consider, no, we did that. That was fourteen. Next is consider contract with SCS engineers related to contamination of former city garage.
Once again, Mr. McDonald will handle this item.
Hello, Mr. McDonald, go ahead.
Thank you, sir. I would also note that our consultant on this project, Doug Dryling, is also on the call, and I'm going to ask him to comment here in a few minutes. The, this is related to the old municipal garage site. Taylor Tetter has put up the page in the policy report that shows the top half where the animal control building is, and then the same picture in the bottom half where the municipal garage was before the city moved away from that site in the early 90s. This was brought upon the city from basically being notified by Kansas Department of Health and Environment that soil samples that had been obtained from city-owned property, as well as other adjacent property, is part of the recent sale of the Price Chopper store. It indicated that there was elevated levels of regulated components. And KDHE informed us that they were going to begin an investigation, and it was suggested that the city should enter the voluntary cleanup program to be part of the process as this moves forward. City arranged with Doug Dryling, with SCS engineers, to assess this with this. He has worked with us on several other projects of environmental issues over the years, and this is much more complex than most of those. And he has prepared a document that was attached to your agenda. It was not, it was not in the policy report, but it is, it's titled the voluntary cleanup investigation work plan, which outlines the history of the site in question, which is the actual yellow boundary, and the history of variety of testing and uses on that site. I'd like to ask Doug if he can spend a few minutes talking about, a little bit about the history of the site and the benefits of being part of the voluntary cleanup program, and exactly what his contract is this evening, which will let us further to address the concerns of the state.
Hello, Mr. Dryling.
Thank you, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. McDonald. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and commissioners. We appreciate the opportunity to appear before commission this evening. Thanks for the introduction, Mr. McDonald. The beginning of the project, this issue was developed or occurred when the, the property transaction occurred at Price Chopper, beginning to the south. Environmental due diligence studies guided that property, identified contamination. It was not expected that contamination originated at that property. Therefore, the results were reported to the Kansas Department of Health and Environment to their environmental liability release program. Once that information had been received by KDHE, they did an assessment and evaluation and determined that it was unlikely that, that contamination occurred or originated from that, that property, from current or past use. At that point, the state issued letters to potentially responsible parties, including the city. And with that correspondence, they, they recommended that the city enter the, the property directly to the north, which was, which is the old former city garage operations and the old former city landfill, to enroll that in their voluntary cleanup program so that there can be guidance provided by the state while the city evaluates the potential for the contamination at that site and to see if it had impacted the Price Chopper property. So, the site was enrolled by the city. Our, our support on that effort included reviewing all the past information. There had been environmental studies done at the landfill by the Environmental Protection Agency back in 1999, which identified some generally low-grade contamination. And at that time, EPA decided it was not warranted to put it in their super fund site program and was, it was basically reported to, to the state, to KDHE, that there was contamination present, and for them to be aware of it for future site development actions. So things sat for 20 years without anything occurring until this property transaction occurred. So that's the origin of why the city received a letter from KDHE requesting them to, to assess the potential for contamination to have originated from the former operations. The work that we are, we are doing going forward, which is, was to prepare the voluntary cleanup investigation work plan, which, which Mr. McDonald discussed, which provides essentially our review, our joint review, the city and SCS, of the development history of the property, the environmental history of the property as it relates to previous studies. And, and after doing that, to propose an approach to collect additional environmental data through collection of samples in soil and groundwater, and also air, to evaluate whether the contamination did originate from that property, and if so, what is the extent of it, and what is the concentrations, and how they compare to allowable standards published by the state. That plan has been, has been completed. The next step would be to submit it to the voluntary cleanup program. Once that is received, they will make the determination whether they agree with our proposed approach to do the additional assessment work, and they'll provide guidance and a potential approval to do that. So the, so the associated cost proposal for SCS that is along with the work plan includes the cost for preparing the voluntary cleanup investigation work plan, conduct the field assessment that we have proposed, and then provide a final report, which will use all the previous environmental data, plus the additional data we'd be collecting under direction of Public Works Department. So that's, that is the scope of work that's, that's provided. Again, our cost proposal, that's before commission tonight. I'm obviously available to provide more information, more details, and to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions for Mr. Dryling?
Thank you.
Good explanation.
How, how long will this take? We approve this, how long will this process, how much longer?
Go ahead, Doug.
I'm sorry, I didn't quite pick that question.
How, how much longer do we expect this to go on before the final report? And KDHE is mostly not working like they used to now, so it's gonna be a while.
KDHE will review at their discretion, although typically, they do that within 30 to 60 days. So once this, once the, the work plan is submitted to the program, it will be reviewed, like I said, within 30 to 60 days. At that point, we have, we'd have correspondence back from the state, and then we would proceed with the field investigation, which from the point of approval to scheduling, clearing the property with utilities, actually collecting the data, analyzing the data with analytical laboratories, and then writing a report, you're looking at approximately 45 days at that point for us to complete that. And then, then the report, then we would prepare actually that summary report that would be submitted to the city for review. So that would be the next steps forward.
Right, and ultimately, the, the state will review this, and they are working on a fairly limited schedule compared to they worked before the COVID. But I think it's clear that SCS is prepared to go to work fairly quickly, and we can turn around their report in 45 to 60 days, we believe. And then, the state will evaluate it and will, will get back with us on how they interpret the results.
Does this, Mr. Priceiger, did you have anything else?
Yeah, just for clarification, I know this property's tangent to the Price Chopper property, but this will have absolutely no impact on Price Chopper, on their redevelopment, their re-renovation. Is that correct?
That, that would be correct. They, they essentially have assessed the environmental condition within the confines of their property boundary. That information was, because there was contamination, that was a part of the due diligence work, it was reported to the Kansas Department of Health and Environment Liability Program, and they basically issued them a determination that they were not responsible for that contamination. Therefore, that provides the liability protection that they need going forward with the development, the sale, and any kind of potential redevelopment that may be planned there.
Okay, thank you.
So that, that will, that's why that program exists, so that we can, so that real estate deals can move forward while environmental work is, proceeds.
Thank you.
That was the question that I had, so I don't need to answer it. I mean, ask it, I appreciate it. Any other comments or questions from my fellow commissioners to Mr. Dryling or Mr. McDonald on this particular agenda item? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the contract with SCS engineers soil testing at the former city garage site on North Third and Marion Streets in the amount of $33,248.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second on this particular agenda item. We're going to begin voting with Commissioner Wilson. Commissioner Priceiger.
Aye.
Commissioner Bowder.
Aye.
An aye is the mayor vote aye. The ayes have it, four to zero, motion carries. So we've approved the action plan and the contract by SCS engineers in an amount not to exceed $33,248. Thank you, Mr. Dryling, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McDonald.
Thanks, Doug.
Next, consider award of 2020 slash 2021 salt bid.
Mr. McDonald?
Okay, I'll get down to that. This, believe it or not, it is the middle of August, which means it's time to be prepared for winter. Curtis Merz is on top of these types of things, and he's on the call here this evening if you have questions of him. This is recommending approval of the 2020-21 salt bid. This has been performed the last few years by Leavenworth County. They allow us to purchase up to a maximum of 1,500 tons of salt on their bid at their price. As you can see in the first page of the policy report, there are a lot of people that sell salt. The county only received two bids, the lowest being from independent salt company of Canoplas. The amount was $60.13 a ton, which is The amount was $60.13 a ton, which is actually less than it was last year, but it's quite a bit more than it was 20 years or 30 years ago. The city has a salt dome that stores about, I think, 1,600 tons of salt. It is approximately half full at this point, and our plan is to, assuming this would be approved this evening, will be to fill it prior to winter and then use the remaining tons to backfill the dome as needed over the course of the winter. We typically see winter storms or events where we need to go out and treat the streets, maybe seven to 10 times per year. The last two years have been somewhat milder than some of the previous years, but we have changed a couple of things, one of which is we're going with all salt now with no sand, and we've also increased the rate at which we apply it, so we more robustly use our salt resources, which means it's even more important to keep the dome as full as possible during the winter. Curtis prepared me some notes earlier today. I think one of our storms we went out on, not much happened. We used about 10 tons. And then there was another one we used, not quite 200 tons. So it can vary widely based on the circumstances that we see.
Sounds good.
Okay. Any other questions, any questions or comments for Mr. McDonald on this particular agenda item?
Mr. Marks, do you have any comments?
No, I don't. We just appreciate your support.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Marks. If not, no further comments or questions. I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the Leavenworth County bid for rock salt at $60.13 a ton for 1,500 tons, totaling $90,195 with independent salt company.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Motion and a second on this particular agenda item. We are going to begin voting with Commissioner Preisinger.
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson.
Aye.
Commissioner Bowder.
Aye.
And aye as the mayor vote aye. The ayes have it, 4 to 0. Motion carries, so we've approved the Leavenworth County bid for rock salt. Good deal. Hopefully, we won't have that bad a winner, but who knows? Okay, so next is the consent agenda. That's normally Commissioner Leonhardt. Can you handle that, Commissioner Bowder?
Yes, I think so.
Okay. I know you can. Will you handle it? I know you can handle it. Will you handle it?
I didn't look at everything as closely as I'm sure she did, but I move to approve claims for July 25, 2020 through August 7, 2020, in the amount of $1,501,816.90. Net amount for payroll number 16, effective July 31, 2020, in the amount of $347,231.28. No police or fire pension.
Second.
There's a motion and a second on the consent agenda. We are going to begin voting with Commissioner Wilson, Commissioner Preisinger, Commissioner Bowder, and aye as the mayor vote aye. The ayes have it, 4 to 0. Motion carries, so we've approved the consent agenda for today's meeting. That ends the agenda items, so as we do with all our meetings, I'm going to first see if the city manager has anything for the good of the order.
Mr. Mayor and Commissioner, just a few quick items. I want to give a little bit of attention to Stubby Park. Anybody who's driven by Stubby Park over the last month or so, since it opened in the last couple of weeks, has seen cars filling the parking lots and children and families filling the equipment, the trails and the benches. I think it was so far a great success. Couple of quick notes. I think they started installing the permanent fence today, so the final piece is that nice fence rather than the orange storm fence. So I'll have to drive by on the way home to see if they completed that. And then the second item is, for years, we've always had porta-potties out there, and the commission has talked about maybe future phases having a full restroom, I'm sorry. But we've only cleaned those once a week due to the traffic that's been out there, and it's been sufficient. But we found out quickly that with a lot more people comes a lot more use of those. So effective today, we did change our contract with our contractor, so now the restrooms will be cleaned twice a week, serviced and all that, twice a week. We did notice that they were falling behind a little bit. So Mondays and Thursdays, those will be serviced, cleaned, and returned to use, so we can keep those clean for everybody who uses them. One, two other notes. Tomorrow, I will be before the Board of County Commissioners to advocate for a fully signalized intersection at 20th and Eisenhower. The county, the voters of Leavenworth County five years ago approved the extension of the countywide sales tax. Three road projects were called out amongst, in the lead-up to that vote, two of them have been completed, and one of them has not started yet, but is expected to go out to bid September 1st. The project and its base bid currently that will go out September 1st has no traffic signal at 20th and Eisenhower. There is no residential, or there's no pedestrian considerations with no traffic signal, so I will be before the Board of County Commission tomorrow, asking them to please direct staff to include a necessary and appropriate traffic control device, in this case, a fully signalized intersection, in the base bid of that project. Next week, week from tonight, we had scheduled our second joint planning, Planning Commission, City Commission, comprehensive plan meeting. Our consultants were working hard to try to be prepared for that, and they're still working, and they're not ready to have that meeting yet, so we'll need to postpone that. That was what we had planned as the only item for that agenda, so I'm going to work to see if we have enough to have a study session next week. So by tomorrow, by the end of the day, I'll let you know. We didn't have anything else ready because the Planning Commission, City Commission joint meeting was the only thing for next week, so I'll work on that and let you know as soon as I can. And then finally, I've been working with Senator Moran's office and the Bureau of Prisons office on an event for next week related to further announcements and conversations about the great news of the new federal medium security prison. Part of that will be open to the public. There'll be a roundtable, a key stakeholders' roundtable discussion. So as soon as we have a final time and date on that, we'll let you know, most likely middle of the day, middle to end of next week, we'll get that information out. That's all I have.
Commissioner Wilson.
Yes, I just wanted to say thank you to all of the voters who came out and voted last week, and congratulations to all the candidates who advanced to the general election.
Amen.
Thank you, Commissioner Wilson. Anything else? Anything else, Commissioner Wilson?
Don't forget to vote again.
That's true. Thank you very much. Commissioner Preisinger?
On what Commissioner Wilson said, I also thank everyone that came out and voted. I think it was one of the heaviest primary turnouts in recent memory, so that's good, and I suspect that the election in November may have a record turnout. I hope that it does. In the purpose of elections, if we get 100% of the registered voters to vote, it would be the best for city, county, and country, state and country. Mr. Kramer, I'm going to MOU on your discussion with the Board of County Commissioners tomorrow. Correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that we have an MOU, memorandum of understanding, duly signed by the City of Leavenworth, City of Lansing, and the county, that does state the signalized intersection at 20th and Eisenhower, do we not?
I don't have the MOU in front of me, but the wording essentially says necessary and appropriate traffic control, including or up to and including a fully signalized traffic signal. The benchmark being, you know, in my mind, the professional benchmark, meeting traffic signal warrants, and that intersection does meet those, and that'll be part of my argument with the county tomorrow, is that it is both necessary and appropriate.
And we, the city, did enter into some litigation a year or so ago about that because they were talking about it, and so we sued, if you will, to ensure that it would be in there. And the ruling was correctly at that time, since no action has been done one way or another, there's nothing to sue for, because you can't sue for what someone might do. I mean, they have to take action. Is that correct?
I believe, and Mr. Waters can correct me if I'm wrong, there had been no adverse action at that time, since the project had not been bid or awarded at that point.
Yes, Mr. Kramer is correct, and that was essentially what happened with that.
Okay.
But I would also agree, and I personally, and we have argued exactly what Mr. Kramer has said for tonight.
Okay. Well, I wish you luck tomorrow and having them abide by the MOU that was assigned by all three parties. And I don't think they can, in my opinion, can't break the contract unilaterally without the consent of the other party. So I hope that we don't have to go into litigation over this. Thank you. That's all I have.
Okay. Commissioner Bowder?
I don't have anything to add to that. Thank you.
Okay. The only thing that I have this evening is to remind citizens that tomorrow I will have a Facebook Live Town Hall beginning at 11:00 a.m. It's been three weeks, at least three weeks since the last one, so we're going to have a representative from USD 453, either the superintendent or one of his representatives talk about the upcoming school year, and particularly, the opening of school, which I think for USD 453 is scheduled for the 24th of August, which is just a little less than two weeks from now. So that'll be good. We're also going to have a representative, subject matter expert in terms of women's suffrage, which of course, that amendment was passed 100 years ago this year. It was passed in 1920, so we'll talk about that. I'll talk about some stats and where we are within the state and the county and the city with respect to COVID-19, and both from a health standpoint, and also some health metrics, and also the standpoint of where we are as far as the various programs that were available to businesses, the paycheck protection program, and other loans that were available through the Small Business Association, Small Business Administration, I'm sorry. And then Mr. Kramer will probably talk about some city business as we normally do, so just a reminder about that. And if there are no other comments or questions or input from my fellow commissioners, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to adjourn this evening's meeting. We're going to go begin voting with Commissioner Preisinger.
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson.
Aye.
Commissioner Bowder.
Aye.
And aye as the mayor vote aye. The ayes have it, 4 to 0. Motion carries, so we are adjourned.